Failed, failed.
Okay, all right, about six o'clock, uh, first order of business seems to be the lights.
But ladies and gentlemen.
Of the United States of America and to the public for which stands a nation under God, invisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Uh, review and approve the minutes of December sixth.
So.
Yes, you will put in seventy seconds. I mean, there's a question on that. Again, we've done all broken paper. That is what we're doing. Uh, members' reports, we'll start with this.
Um, I just, I had brought it up before, just the, uh, the passage on River Road, it's not a town road, so just, you know, hoping we've got kind of a plan in place for that, because there's a lot of cars going off today trying to pass her there. But I just want to put out there, thank you to all, like the line crews and everyone, I mean, like, I, I'm amazed I was underwater and no power and I got power back last night, like, because they were climbing through the woods and going through, so I'm very impressed and thankful that everyone looks so hard and diligently.
Not doing good.
Did all of everybody's help that pulled together to make this thing happen was pretty amazing to see what other communities have gone through and ours is doing pretty well.
Like, we even had the fire chief calling us, because you knew that we were, like, to make sure everything was okay, that we need anything, I mean, like, I don't get that in many towns, that was really nice to, like, you know, feel supported and checking on.
Nothing.
Same thanks to everyone, especially people clearing the roads and, uh, those putting together the warming center, that must be.
Sweet. All right, for me, same thing you guys said, uh, and then, right, uh, so, all right, just to bring it forward, uh, so I had somebody, uh, mentioned to me about, uh, the amount of people running the lights, uh, even when they're working, right, uh, I think we're all probably guilty of it. They had mentioned a way to deter it, uh, or ask, you know, and I, and I don't think there is a way to deter it, I mean, the lights have been fixed by DOT, so this is how they're gonna stay now, right, on this timing that they're using, or will they?
No, so they're all gonna be replaced, the timing mechanism's gonna be replaced.
So I guess that would be the solution, hopefully the timing gets better, because he's like, oh, well, couldn't you install one thing that automatically takes when you run the light? I, I don't, I don't think that's practical, I, I don't, I don't know if anybody has an insight on that.
Is it shorter about, you know, for some reason?
Uh. Seems like the priority is to this way, not route two, and it should be priority to route two.
You would think.
It seems she's sitting a lot longer than that, if that's what you think.
Right? So. Any, anyway, uh, so we'll just hope, I want to bring it forward so that it wasn't mentioned that we could have a lot of people running the lights, uh, but I think for us, all we can do is hope that the timing changes and then.
Well, I mean, we could put in a request to the SO, to the sheriff's office, and to stay pleased, even though they're not covering that, they do put out some detailed stuff to maybe just run a few details over there to try to alleviate, that they start seeing little lights flying around.
Yeah.
Stopping any vehicles, some tickets that deserves, um, staffing is tough, but at the same time, putting in the requests, at least shows we're trying to.
Yeah, so doing open on that, yeah, that's all I had to say for that.
Yep.
Uh, town managers' report.
Okay, yeah, you know, a lot of people need to go, I think they need to go back to driving school, pass another test, how to manage a highway intersection. Yeah, it's hard to see anything. Uh, but anyway, back to it, um, sorry if this is missing parts and pieces, but it is what it is. Uh, we received a five thousand dollar check from the insurance company for the boat launch dock that was lost in the spring storm that was declared by FEMA, um, that was subject to a one thousand dollar deductible, so that's now thirteen thousand five hundred dollar deficit, which is gonna be included in my FEMA claim, which should be reimbursed off at ninety-five percent, um, on that, so that's good. The absentee ballots are available to be requested, but they're not here in house, your nomination papers are now available, they're due that by close of business, January third. The town office will be closed Monday, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. That's the day it's been, and will also be closed on the first for New Year's, planning board will have a meeting on January eleventh. Uh, the planning board will be handling a shortland zone and site plane review application, uh, which should hopefully bring resolution to the current litigation with regards to this Smithfield Grove property. Application fees have been paid in full, the applications are complete, they just need to go to the planning board to get that shortland zone approval. So summary of that is, we could have done this, and it would have been the same exact resolution right from the get-go. So unfortunate, but it is what it is, and compliance is always the ultimate goal. And we're gonna developing a survey for the TIP committee, they are looking at projects, programs, things like that, uh, that would help the com- the community. So, uh, right now, I've got one that's just a general survey, I think that's gonna know more from the email that I got, um, just a few minutes ago, to target some towards business owners or prospective business owners, um, with the suggestion of many member to see what they would be looking for, uh, as an attract to invest here, um, and we'll go from there. The TIF committee, I very well expect, will meet on January twenty-third, there are a lot of different projects out in the air, um, that are gonna come forward, just because of the timing of it all, but, um, the other thing that they are exploring, and that's why real reason probably for this meeting will be considering or exploring, um, how a revolving loan fund works. So that's, uh, you know, some non-traditional gap funding for private investment in the community where they may not otherwise be able to get it, usually it's, uh, a reasonable entry break, but the discussion amongst the committee at the very initial level was, how do we keep this low as it is, um, to gain investment, so.
I think it's exciting.
We'll start learning more about that, um, and it can be complex and it can be controversial, but the committee, I think, overall was liking of it, so that was all good there. Um, two sewer accounts were auto foreclosed on last Saturday, uh, we cannot release that, those properties or the one that I have uh, in real estate right now from last year, because of the Supreme Court case out of Minnesota that requires a new process for doing that, so uh, this new process, you'll see when we get to the warrant, that's fair, I think, for town meetings, uh, will probably require us to put out an RFP for Realtor, and we will have to list these properties, only claim the nominal cost of administration, get what's due to its bad taxes, fees and interest, and then give the proceeds back to the people that was taken from uh, the takings clause in the US Constitution, so anyway, it's just far more complex and the, there's no gain for us, it's just added administrative burden, so uh, it is what it is in the grand scheme of things, it is what is right, and what is legal, um, and so, I don't know. We'll have to review the process of how we wanna handle that when we draft the warrant. The automatic foreclosure process on paid twenty twenty-one real estate taxes is coming near, uh, the thirty, forty-five day notices are going out on Friday. The foreclosure date is February fourth, and the next, well, see, that was up the instaster from last time. Uh, unpaid sewer links for October, November, December twenty-two, those are filed tomorrow, um, and then the budget committee would need, if everything goes well tonight, they're on the books for January second at six. Overall, holiday strolls success, we had a lot of major wins on that, uh, increased rate, uh, participation, at least that was perception, decent weather, we had concerns, traffic, right, um, but there's no perfect solution to that necessarily, and they're gonna get together, they were supposed to get together Monday, but in good decision, decided to not do that, to discuss the stroll, was going with that, what they wanna do for next year, but also to begin planning their music series. I think they're talking about wanting to do two months, and they would have private funding to support that, they're talking about not having any event manager coordinator that they would do that, and so, um, and so, hey, we'll see how it comes out, but they're gonna start putting some names out on the table, say, if anybody uh, that would be interested in performing, uh, they can reach out to me here at the town office or by email, and let me know who they are, what they do, if they have music online that we can look at, preview, what they would charge uh, for two, two and a half hour slot, that'd be great, and any food trucks, also take names, so those as well. We have a lot of people to thank, and I don't want to not miss or get anybody, but I've got to single something up for the last few days. It's been nothing short of misery for a lot of folks here, um, in terms of trying to keep things open, we've got, um, people running since Monday morning at, you know, six o'clock, um, to get things done in the rainstorm, so as of right now, um, we've got the shelter that's open at the school, at five minutes to six, the call came in that the Red Cross is going to convert our shelter, they're gonna close it down tomorrow mid-morning. Anybody remaining that still needs shelter will be transported to Augusta, and they're gonna be setting up a larger scale central shelter for folks there. I have committed for folks, if there's still an electricity problem, they can use this room for warming and charging, and if the internet stays hulu or whatever they would wanna watch, um, to get themselves, the people dead without their devices. Um, and then we've got like a craft or whatever, actually, they've got pickups that are gonna come back when it's school, um, and we're gonna just have folks, if they want to, they can come in and out, whatever. Um, so that's how that's now going to transition, they were gonna share the leadership with us at seven o'clock, uh, tonight, and that just brought in some additional funding supplies, staffed. Uh, we had all volunteers through the night last night, at least two apiece, taking shifts, somebody has to stay awake for the safety of everybody that's there in line, looking at whatnot, so we have Matt Gary, Alyssa Moody and Matthew Pepper, all of them, you know, they were integral in getting this set up yesterday. Todd and Laura, Penny and Laura was like in charge of that thing for a good long while, and was really integral in getting food on the table, Diane Goodell at Lake Cats and the Dionne and Brown families, uh, they have all been there in pretty strong capacity, about coloms there all day. Um, we have Chief and Darlene Jones, uh, they have put in a lot of time, uh, Dave, especially with the water district and fire, Darlene cooking meals for the firefighters, uh, and folks that were around, we have all sorts of volunteers, is kind of plugging in here now, and I'm not gonna name, Tri-Palm Variety cooked us up, well, made us up twenty large Italian chips, yes, we paid for them, but nobody else was doing that for us with the lights out on Monday night at seven o'clock, uh, the folks over at the public works, they work endlessly, uh, DMO landscaping, Nicholson yard maintenance, and NF loose incorporated, all reached out to us privately, and said, whatever you need, we're there, we're dropping what we're doing, uh, Link Landscape and offered it, uh, and I can't tell you how appreciative that we are to have had those folks that just made cleanup so seamless, we have equipment, we've been blessed with good equipment, but they're adding more when you've got a backhoe with, uh, and it just makes so good work of it, so we're thankful for them, the sheriff office, the warden service made an appearance with us on the bridge, uh, we had, you know, really hot solid environment, um, out there for a while, and so, uh, it was handy having them, the firefighters up, down, sideways, and their spouses, sad fifty-four, uh, not easy, but John Moody, Dave Levitt, uh, Rob Rodrick, Mark Hatch was here this afternoon, janitorial and food service, that's made it, they opened up that school for the most part, gave us the master key, gave us the refrigerators, gave us the food and all the cooking equipment, and said, do what you need to do, and ninety-nine point eight percent of folks at that school were of the same mentality, and so it is important, and so it's, we had a the shelter came in large part in the format that it did at the request of Fairfield, and so they have their shelter at the community center, which is about fifty feet off the river, and obviously they couldn't do it, they had flooded out trail parks, they had evacuated senior housing, uh, and low income housing, and they had not many places to put them, so, um, we were kind of the answer, and, and we did not have much support from the county, uh, we had to circumvent to get to the Red Cross, we kinda had to do things along the dimension where it all got done. Uh, so it looks good on us, I can tell you that there was not one of our residents that sought that place last night, but we had fifty or sixty of them in the glory ward, we made it for them, you know, um, or for a shower, so, um, it did make an impact, and I don't know who's gonna go over there tonight, but it's gonna be staff overnight by the Red Cross, and we still have locals that are gonna be going on delivering hot meals to folks that ask for them, and things like that, so a huge win on the optics, if nothing else, uh, good for the community, and just a huge thank you, because I'm just one person, I don't live here, I did what I could, but, um, it's just, Gary was, she probably got two hours of sleep last night, and then looked back at it today, and pretty much forgot to tell her to go home, so she was told to go home, and she disappeared as soon as somebody else left out to come here, and people like that to make the world a friend, so, thank you.
Okay, good times, all right. Screen rolling here, uh, discussion action on December twentieth, you know, warrant number twenty-two.
I'm going to approve general warrant number twenty-two for the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Oh, seven, eight, second, uh, any further discussion on that?
What was the rent fund?
That's our kayak.
Okay, yep, all right.
I did the same thing when I saw it, I said, whoa. Any further discussion? Saying none, all vote in favor, that's everybody. Uh, discussion action on December twentieth, therefore, warrants, nobody really know. Well, there it is.
Yes, okay, um, the, move to approve, the warrant for the airport, and then warrant number four, forty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and nine cents.
Second, so motion and second, uh, any further discussion?
I mean, is any of this coming back to us, like, this is, this is a, okay.
So I've been scrambling my brains for a couple of days, Peter scramble isn't here with his numbers, ninety percent, uh, was twenty-eight thousand two eighty-one seventeen of the gale and coastal road repair. So we received an offset in twenty-eight two eighty-one from this, so net-net, we paid gale twenty-one thousand, we paid coastal ten thousand, oh, that, that's what we paid, but we got twenty-eight back. So we had, what?
Oh, okay, right, not bad at all, right, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, like, it's on here, okay. Okay.
Yeah, that was like repaintage.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
And what, what did they seal, everything up, or is that for runway?
No, that's just the final payment on it.
Okay, that's just the.
It was a hundred and fifty, and there was one, it was almost two hundred, I think, total.
Total, yeah.
And then you can do the whole air. Yeah.
Okay.
Seven, one, correct, that's.
Uh, so, uh, hold on a second, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all votes in favor, that's it.
I forget how it makes me like.
Yeah, I don't know, that would be, uh, discussion action on December twentieth.
I'm going to wait through the circumvent in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Second, motion and second, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all votes in favor, that's everybody. Uh, public comments? Thank you.
All right, one, fire away. So your fire department received, um, in twenty-eight, oh, it's twenty-nine now, since it's printed an hour ago, calls for service related to struggle, those are the documented calls. First service, and many of them, of course, one call leads into something else, and it might have got written down while you were doing it, but twenty-eight, uh, took now twenty-nine document, they called ten firefighters total, uh, not all ten, whatever you call the ten total. A couple of highlights, um, may not be noticed necessarily, but we had uh, two incidents where, uh, our firefighters pulled, um, in both cases, residents out of, well, one out of a vehicle, just the court became submerged, and one out of, uh, two out of a house, um, uh, you know, water off the chest, chest level, but unfortunately, a dog was lost, and that is it, but a dog and a cat, and two people were saved, and that is it, so. Couple of highlights there, uh, most roads are passable, um, I, I use the word passable, some of them are still hazardous, uh, regularly, and maybe is, is probably top of that list. Uh, merger was worth here, has some washouts, some significant, and so we continue to work around those. Uh, special thanks to, uh, Madison Fires, Scotty Fire, Smithfield Fire especially, um, Richard, you know, the whole staff, the town, uh, Public Works Department, they were awesome, between Public Works and, you know, DM Zero and the others, they were, they, they really helped our fire department move on to the next thing, uh, because we, we oftentimes can spend a lot of time throwing trees out of the road. But when, when DMO comes along, or for some of the others that you mentioned, or Public Works, and they were able to make quick work of, of those, it just saves the day, really, uh, so thank you, everybody, um, still a lot of trees on power lines out there, we're not out of the wood yet, as some of these lines get energized, and it, it doesn't seem like CMP is checking them uh, like they normally would, they normally build the full length of a road, make sure that there's nothing on the lines that energize it. Doesn't seem to be happening quite that way, which is resulting in some surprises, uh, when they do energize it, we'll read them those, um, that's it. Thank you, everybody, for your support.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, good, all right.
Um.
You expect some of those speed bump?
Well, I, 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 I just want to say it'll be something, but.
First present to you. How would you return favor and take the damn thing out?
If the water gets that high, we'll, we'll take it. Okay, yeah, okay, discussion action on resignations.
Uh, we do have a lot of those sent to already, if I can get it in three separate motions, you, uh, point to the fire chief, and now the fire chief has some sacrifices to make, in order to dedicate what she means to, to the departed. For it to be to accept, uh, the resignation to the fire department.
So.
There's a motion and second, for us to stay on these committees, uh, so motion and second, uh, any further discussions? On the board, uh, seeing that all votes in favor of accepting Todd's resignation.
Well, they were in favor of it.
Yeah, exactly, right. Okay, so that, that's everybody. So, yeah, thank you, and say, now we need to lose you from those spots.
Wait, and then I move to a, definitely, the resignation of, uh, Patino from the Board of Appeals.
Just we're all locked in, yeah, there we go, yeah, second. Hold on a second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all votes in favor, that's everybody.
I move that we accept the resignation of Patino as crust of the border of water district.
Second, any further discussion, seeing none, favor, that's it.
Thank you for all those, thank you, hold on. With the war much, the last one was.
All right, how long have you done the water district?
Twenty-five years in Pittsburgh.
Twenty-five, yeah. Then you have a replacement, or? No, no idea.
I, I know that the remaining board members of, oh, okay, I'll always have to come up with a name, this is better not, and your board was five, or three, or yeah.
All right, moving forward, uh, discussion on local philanthropic grants, and that's my big word of the day. Good place on the agenda, a collective question.
Um, so we reviewed the budget, and I saw that we still had some philanthropic grant funds to spend, so I'd be remiss, not to circle back, suggest um, giving KDH what they asked for, which I'm trying to pull it up right now, and then the remainder of the hospice volunteer, that's what I'm saying.
All right, now, two of the rest in that's what, right, uh.
There's by my calculations, one thousand six hundred and nine dollars and thirty-two cents, so I would make a motion to gift six hundred of that to kind of that behavioral.
Yeah.
This is my first.
So motion.
Action.
Yeah, can you do it that way, the motion and second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all votes in favor, that's everybody.
I think that would be one thousand nine dollars and thirty-two cents, but I would make a motion to gift to hospice of Somerset County, second.
See more than that, any further discussion, seeing none, all votes in favor. And that was a nice catch, see that we have that left, like, use it, so, kudos to you. All right, discussion, uh, action on text alert systems.
Thank you, every day, this is, uh, I would love to know where you could drive, and, and.
Optimistic about this, I guess.
Okay, so we had talked about this a while ago, uh, and then we brought it up again two weeks ago, and unfortunately, we had maybe thought that we needed it again sooner than we later, but anyway, uh, I was able to, I surveyed all town managers last two Thursdays ago, I guess, and asked them, who are they using, and they came back with two, one's this civic ready, which is divisions plus, and then the other was Text My Gov, which is kind of a new trendy upstart, uh, let boil it down, the new trendy upstart, great, but it's more expensive, it's a limitation on my, where text messages send, um, and not my recommendation, my recommendation to you is the civil plus, now we're, um, most people have it already, the other thing is that it interfaces with social media, and it interfaces with our website, which we already base it plus forward. Uh, so, right, so it, it's when we would send something theoretically, and I hadn't learned too much about it, figuring the full kinds of the essence, uh, it would throw a red R on our website in a different sense in the text, right?
Yeah, things like that, so.
I have a question, and I didn't look too, too deeply into it, I just kind of perused the cost and thought we'd talk about it, but if we were to do this, is there a way for residents to decide, decide like what alerts they want, once they got?
Yeah, so there are a bunch of checkboxes, you can get select all, you can go back and change it based upon your, I think your cell phone number and email.
Yeah.
And, and manage it that way, but we can bucket it how we want.
Yeah, so I, I guess if people don't have kids, they don't need any of like the school.
You're not gonna do that.
Okay.
School's not our job.
I'm just saying.
You're gonna be very good about defining those plans, and that, the discussion that we had last week, it's not my job to communicate the sheriff's business or the superintendent's business, they may need to do that themselves, and if the sheriff can't do that himself, I'm happy to have a worker to do that, but that's gonna go under like an emergency services, where we would alert for fire departments.
Is that the vendor that Ward, Wardle just made a paper?
Yes.
They had two after your last meeting, that they just put a system in, and this was the one.
That's correct. What's in there, what's focusing there? Yep, so it would be, yeah, if you are bringing those, with seven o'clock, and they run up to twenty-five hundred dollars for the first year of civic ready for package management.
So.
The motion and second, any further discussion on that?
Does it keep going up, or does it like?
Right, is it sort of over?
The twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, well, I think.
So it's twenty-five hundred, then it's twenty-six, twenty-five, and then your annual uplift, I really like that, it's the first time I've seen it.
Mm-hmm.
Uplift, five percent.
And every year, you think five percent more?
Yeah, that's awesome business.
What?
I'd get to figure that out, my business. Annual uplift, right?
Beautiful uplift.
I was surprised that, but that's, you know, you could get it, right?
Yeah, I guess.
I think.
You can give a new customer, use a different email and get it.
Okay, no different, now you're doing your direct team.
Oh, gee.
We gotta go shop around, oh, okay, well, that, oh.
So as long as we give the sixty days notice, as long, if we were gonna cast.
Right, we're good.
And I actually expect this to be more expensive than what it is.
Me too. I thought it was.
I thought it was.
Yeah, I thought we were looking at like at least.
It will, we just let it happen, it's up.
So, and, and once I get more familiar with it, if you vote for it, then I think I'll have to explore, do I just get like a simplified tablet, that's the interest, that we can get people while we're they're waiting for us to say, what different number, and I'll pay, I don't know if I can do that, but that's what we're gonna try to do.
Yeah, I, I just.
That database quickly.
But what we just went through for the past couple of days, if we'd had this in place, like, I think people were trying with like awful internet to try to figure out, looking on Wardwalk, like neighborhood watch, which is like, you know, spotty information.
Like, right, the shelter in place.
Exactly, the shelter, the shelter. Yeah, yeah.
The warming center.
Yep, I, I, I think that we would have been so happy to have it a couple of days ago, and God forbid anything that happens again, like, it'd be nice to, you know.
I think you said that last time, so.
Yeah.
Well, also, anything else under discussion? You know, motion and second, go with this.
People ask for.
Right, exactly.
You know, it's stuff that people ask for, there, there's just some of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, all votes in favor, that's everybody.
Choose to rely on the baseball, does that work?
Yeah.
Not today.
And it's all true.
Okay, uh, discussion action on ground equipment purchase.
Uh, this is, uh, one call from one vendor, but bear with me, I know it's front of mind. We have been exploring the addition of adaptive equipment at Musoul Park, and we've been trying to find vendors that offer a variety of adaptive equipment that's in our price range, which relatively non-existent. You're looking at eighty and ninety thousand dollars for this typical adaptive equipment, or you're looking at this hundred and fifty thing that is a whole unit, none of which we want, we have a grant for twenty thousand dollars for new balance for the addition of adaptive equipment at Musoul Park. So I sent the catalog from two companies to my eleven or twelve year old Parks Committee member, and asked her to pick up the equipment that she thought that kids would want. And we didn't know what the price was, so she picked some stuff up, I sent them to get quoted out, um, and this is kind of what we came back with, so this is a wheelchair capacity mirror around, so your wheelchair kind of comes in, very good, uh, everybody can use it. Merry-go-round, so your wheelchair kind of comes in, very good, uh, everybody can use it, it's got little bars up, it's kind of like that little wheel of terror, death maybe, where you. Spin it around and hold on, but it's completely round and encompassing. There will be a nominal cost of installation, which is why it's only at sixteen eight. Uh, you've got the ADA accessible sand diggers, so those are, you can stand up as a child, or you can wheel into them, and you can maneuver those in the. Um, existing sandboxes already there, but then there's an elevated sand table.
Well, it's until flooded.
Maybe we can get in the mud box.
Is it going to a slum?
Yes.
So I have a question, like that, the merry-go-round, but do we have a swing that a wheelchair can go into?
We don't have a swing, no wheelchair.
So my thing would be like. When you think about the different types of activities that someone who is in a wheelchair, I would think that swinging would be far more exciting than wheeling around in a circle.
Yeah.
I don't want to be insensitive, but like, they can wheel around, but like they can't get into a swing and have that feeling of like what. I would, I would say that a swing that they can get into would be something far more exciting and.
So I appreciate that, but I'm not. I'm not in that position, but I'm also not a child, and I gave a child a twelve, a, a twelve year old, I think, a catalog, pick out what she thought it would like. And. I can go price you out of swing, but the other thing is that you're gonna have to look at groundwork. For a swing, because it's not just gonna be woodchaps.
Well, on, not to interrupt you, sorry, on that, uh, on that note, I, I would actually love to see the pricing on the adaptive swing piece, uh. That'd be fantastic, and whether it wins lots, that's what's literally the words out of my mind, and if it will fit on what we have. Because I know we do have quite a bit of stuff that we put on there now.
We put on the inclusive swing, which is how this all started.
Yeah.
Was that large green plastic?
Right.
Swing we put in last year.
Which was pretty well received.
Very well, that's what kind of started sort of.
Something to keep in mind as we look at revamping the park and what to change and.
Most everything that I've seen is freestanding, means it's in the river.
Whoa, yeah.
Cause I did, what I will do, that will be a price.
Okay. Like, I'm just, and like, and that could be insensitive what I'm saying, but I'm just thinking of like, you know.
Yeah.
What are you really missing out on when you're, you know, in, in a wheelchair, and like, that motion could be much, much more exciting than spinning around in a circle.
I think with the two, we've pretty much got it covered, but if you've got a swing and a merry-go-round, you, you're pretty well good.
I think the fact we're thinking about it in general, I think is, is fantastic, and we're trying to do those.
The one thing you can see where the, the merry-go-round might be fun is that they can do it with other kids.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? No, huh, I take that.
So we'll get a swing then too.
I mean, twenty, that's only sixteen.
Two motions here to like say we're not. Going out to bid or something. Okay. Did that come first? Okay. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to not utilize our formal bid process, because A, this is kind of a niche. Topic and difficult to find people for, and also because the funding is coming from a grant from New Balance.
Okay.
Second.
Motion a second, any further discussion, nice catch on that, um. Seeing now a little favor. That's everybody.
And then I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of adaptive, um. Playground equipment up to the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Can we go pick it up? I just looked at the shipping there, thirty-one hundred for shipping. I mean, is it cheaper for us to drive somewhere?
It says it's two hundred fifty-four pounds, but the heaviest single ordering is not weighed on there, you should have seen the price for freight.
I mean, where is it out of?
Yeah, no.
I think it's an offset, I'm telling you, I'm signing this. Probably before the one tonight, before they catch it.
Yeah.
What's an offset?
That they did not put a weight in on the.
Oh.
Merry-go-round.
Well, that's probably why it's three grand to ship it, I'm guessing they assessed it, and that's why.
It was only six grand freight before.
Oh, okay. Alright, there you go.
Uh, motion, any, any second, uh, any further discussion on this? Seeing now.
That just leaves us the extra money if we do get the swing, that price comes in, if there's enough money left to do that, we can still utilize.
Correct, and then we, we have a commitment to sign just part of it, right? We have to do something that recognizes the balance, and then I have to coordinate that with them, and then I have to market, but that's fair.
And then we must have money somewhere that we could.
Yeah.
The Parks Committee wants to do like a fundraising thing, like instead of doing the fifty-fifty project, the cost of the business, they want to have a project that they can say, oh, all of this goes sat to the dry.
Maybe a big stop.
I just wanted to make sure we might kind of lose the other. You know. The rest of the money if we spent that now and. Wanted to use the remainder.
Okay, so all those are favorite? But that is everybody. Uh, yeah, favorite one here, uh, our discussion action on twenty twenty-four animal housing.
Uh, this is legally required, uh, we've gone through some accepting any problem with the six or seven years just of its proximity. The price has increased and increased substantially, um, it's been fifty to eighty-seven for, well, as long as we've been with them. And now they're asking for the increase to eighty-one ninety-five. Um, it was one seventy, now it's two fifty per capita, um, I, I. It's about like the percentage increase, but the raw dollar in the grand scheme of things is not terrible, they are doing some better things. Um, and what they do offer us in the contract versus previous contracts is, is fair, I think. Uh, one of those things that are giving our A C O key to the genre. Um, so it, they're, they're looking to do capital campaigns and things like that by trying to improve their facility. And it's only possible with, you know, largely municipal grants to get that done, so. If we don't go here, we've got to go somewhere, so we're looking to Waterville or. I mean, to really.
Right, cause there's only two or three games and.
In proximity.
Right, that we could actually utilize.
I mean, as far like, I mean, proximity, obviously, I miss me news why we've largely gone with Somerset. But just from personal experience, the Waterville, you may, I mean, they're pretty fantastic to deal with too, so I don't know like, I mean. I don't really know a benefit or, you know, anything like with either or.
It moved from Waterville to Scampigan probably six years ago. And that was because animals are getting sick and dying constantly out there. Uh, which I think they just got through with a bunch of cats.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of a widespread.
But we didn't have that experience, so then what do you do with cats? We're responsible for them, just to say. Uh, but then there was also this, a history not told against current administration, but there's a history of mismanagement. At the Waterville Shelter, and that always came back for the municipalities to suffer. So when we made the decision to go to Scampigan, it was relatively break even, and the only cost that we had was purchasing a, uh, freezer. For the dead animals to be stored in a public works garage. So that they could be claimed. Uh, another benefit that is.
If they came in, or?
If they get dead.
Like, we're killing them?
No.
I mean, we, yeah, we were in balance.
Well, yeah, we're not like a kill shelter though, it's not like down the south, it's like, some things will just roll with it, it gets quick, but we're not like, you didn't get adopted in three weeks, so. Significative, fluffy, like that's not what's happening.
We get a dog that's down the side of the road, buzz, trash bags it, tags it, and it goes into a deep freezer, a public works garage.
Okay.
After two weeks.
Two weeks.
If, if it doesn't, very often, it is customary to then take it to waste management. Under this contract now, it offers us cremation service. Included.
And it's included, is the cremation?
It is now, yeah.
It is, wait, and these, okay, because these were separate charges before, right, on top of our contract, these weren't previously included.
Yeah, so this cremation service, telephone service, lost and found, and then the, the affordables. Uh, spay and neuter clinics were never included in previous. I think, candidly, they try and clean out their act.
Aren't they really able to do that spay? I know that that's an enormous amount, like, I mean, even for a paying customer, someone who has great relationships with a veterinary clinic right now. To get your animal spayed or neutered your months out, so did you get that?
Well, it says it's to help town members, so.
I'm sure they give a lot of funding for that. As A S P C A wants animals.
Yeah.
They get neutered, so that we don't have more to choose.
And this is just for the convenience, we still, we still pay for the spay and neutering on top of.
No, I think that you facilitate, it's like you go really.
Never not money well spent.
Yeah, well, no, right, right.
Nip and snip.
Right, so. Okay, motion on a second, yeah, uh, any other discussion? See, now all those favor, it's everybody. And then, alright, discussion action on preferred, uh, preferred vendor application.
So this is a very. Draft form of something that we've been talking about now for the last few months, and so I've had people ask about it because they've heard about it. And so I said, okay, I gotta bump it further up the list, and so I went a few different. Forms, government forms are usually gross. And they were the ones that I found, so I took a few things from those, and honestly, I went to like my alma mater university and. Kind of stole it, and pulled some things out that I didn't think we cared about, um, and went with it. So I sent it to you, and I don't know what you have, that you'd be interested in knowing about a preferred vendor or whatnot, but.
I think maybe we need to know what your liability insurance coverage is, like, what, what amount, like, what, if like you're bonded, like, I mean, some things have to be, but if like, what is your. You know, total liability insurance that you have, I think that we need to know.
Don't, we have a minimum threshold anyway, that you have to be insured for, to work for us directly.
No, we customarily ask for million.
Well, you, nothing on the books for a minimum, that's just a million, I think a million, it's long, a million, two million, I don't, very rarely.
I gotta wear his neck with a wallet, wallet three, just like shit.
Yeah, I think that we should know, one, that they do have, you know, in place, and that it's, you know, some standard amount that it can.
Be a preferred vendor, I think you would either need to show that proof initially, write a valid.
As, as a contractor, you're asked that generally, yes, every, most, most jobs are many significance. I gotta call the insurance company and say fax over.
So I can even include it, we, we had talked about that, we talked about a couple of different things, but it's like, we could do liability, we do workers' club and things like that, those are all things that we have to check anyway. But am I gonna ask a. Travel guy, does he have this for liability insurance, or my office supply people, cause that's what, you know. We're gonna go to that many people, and what's to stop somebody from having it and then just not paying it? Uh, or changing it, so maybe we put a note on here that. As a general contractor of the town, second.
Do you just, if, if you've got a preferred contractor, that you go through this process? Just cause you do it this year, you might wanna have an updated every year, send them to say.
I know, right.
Just see, that would come to Europe. You as a town on a yearly basis says, listen, as of this day, I need a new update.
Yeah.
You know, cause I have to go through that with, like Dan McKinney, I'm working with him on the Madison project with Sam. And, but I have to go through it again next year, and later anybody checks calls me, hey, you got an updated version, so you guys might have to do something like that.
I, I, I think that that's just our due diligence, and honestly, I think that's makes like this bidding process fair for companies too, because companies who are doing things the right way and having insurance and doing that above board. It's really easy to pay people underneath the table and not do things the right way, but your bid's gonna be significantly different than someone who is ins- insulating the town, and I think that in order to keep it a level playing field, I, I don't see why we wouldn't do it, because.
And it is pretty easy, it's either coffee and a page, and you call, ask for a line, and you mail it to somebody.
Yeah.
So I, I think they need to do it, cause we had to do, I do it, yeah, every year for all my other things.
Yeah. Anything a contractor would want would have an issue.
If they provide one at the time of the application, and then if we award them something, they have to just verify that it's in effect.
Right, I, I, right.
At the time of.
Really, that's kind of.
That would make sure it's still.
Small, I mean, right, you need to be insured. On that project. And on, and I'll tell you that.
Yeah, most of these that I've seen. Are, are, if you said preferred vendor, so vendor could be someone who is selling the town product, or somebody who's selling, selling the town services, and in some cases, both. So you wouldn't want to put any insurance or, um, that type of onsite coverage. For somebody who was selling you a box of paper clips.
True.
So generally, most of these forms start with check this box at the top, you know, which one of these you were, and, and okay, if you do A, then this is our salary allowance. Cause B, it might be a lot longer.
A vendor versus a contractor, I guess.
If I'm selling, if I'm selling material to a contractor, they don't require that, ever on the site, performance services. Product or services, yes. Generally wise.
I feel like I would wanna know, like, how long they've been in business, or like how long they've been established. And then also, I don't feel like I need to know a lot of that.
That's, can you even ask some of those?
Yeah, I just feel like it gets in the weeds and all of those things, like that's. I mean, personally, I wouldn't wanna be making those decisions as a board based on some of those things.
Right, you could ask, but you won't give an answer, just leave it.
Right, and then, and relevance, right.
Yeah, like, are we wanting to be given any sort of preparational, like, decision-making, because it's like a minority owned, and I, I think that we want to be stepping in that, that makes it a little bit murky.
I don't even think we want to ask that.
No.
I, I do want, like, I wanna know.
For the airport, vendors at the airport.
Oh, yeah, that's, you have to do that for any federal address.
That, and that's what I focus on. Really?
Any federal stuff, yeah.
No kidding.
Probably trying to make it a business.
This is shelving.
Yeah. No, that is.
There you go, yeah, that'll do it. Uh, anything else, that's right, I'll update this, and okay, yes, okay, yeah, and if you need anything else, just send it really. Thank you, but yeah, right, uh, other business, does the board have anything?
I do, um, I was just, I, and actually, I had to reach out to Mike about it earlier, because I didn't know where we were at, some of the status of like some of our roads, but. Especially now after, like, Monday, because it got so warm in Thon, some of the roads, like our, our dirt roads, they just got gnarly, cause it just was like, it froze and it got. And now with this, I mean, some of these ruts, I mean, I've got a big heavy vehicle, and I was in Formula Drive squirrely all over the place, so my concern would be, you know, like, um. What's the name of the road that the dummy day cares on, is it? Bigelow, so that one there, like, if we don't drag that, like, relatively soon, I mean, you've got lips and things. Is that now not gonna be ready for, we do have the budget for it, to put the hot tub on, and like, how many other roads got affected like this, because it was such drastic, dramatic changes in like our weather? Have we, are some of our roads screwed and thrown us off track for things, like, and do we need to be. Doing things right now that we didn't budget, so that we can fix them before it's frozen and it's stuck, like.
Good man. I spoke to her about that too, as far as, she asked about where it stands in Hot Pocket. And I said that we had discussed it, and we had put it back on the list, which was a walk further away from where it was prior to. I just, because of where we stand with some big issues on final rolls in Sandy River, there are some. Big projects coming up, and we don't know where our budget is gonna fall, we still do have limited funds that is now in the discussion, but we can't, we. I, I couldn't tell that next year it's gonna be done for sure, that's gonna be one of those where. We'd like to see it get done, but it did not move, just because they requested it now, it did get, it didn't get bumped right to the top initially, and that's where we kind of sit with it right this minute, we will try to. Push it up, they'd get it back in discussion, but we don't have a true time frame.
If the federal money comes through the way that we think that it should. Probably gonna be a twenty twenty-five project.
Yeah, and I, I think for me, it was like, that was one specific road, like, and I feel like there are others that I'm not traveling, because of what just happened the last couple of days. How many of our roads are now in condition that we didn't anticipate a week ago that we need to address because?
None.
None, or, okay.
You have so many turns of seasons, it's just called a spring, a spring thought. Like, get your January thought, it's all run up, I have no trucks down around the loop, and it's pretty much back up, I'm gonna roll there and rate it.
Okay, yeah, that answers the, well, my question in my mind, was that right there, are we doing any, are we, we're not doing anything, we're gonna do it when we can possibly, like, to talk.
Cause if it turns out cold, if you had other issues, it's been warm for three days, if it turns out it's gonna be cold tonight, tomorrow, Friday. So it's more than likely not gonna even be touched by a grader, so best you can hold for, snow. Rest of the spring, but that's. And I don't, but that is living in Maine, in rural Maine with.
Like a Taw, like Todd's Road right now, it's, I mean, it was, it's like it was pavement, I mean, god, that is so hollow ridden and, but, I mean, jeez.
It's, it's worse now than it was before it was brown, right? And, but worse than that, worse than that is the sun.
Screwed over that, uh, you know, I just. Such as, like, as you said, do we just get something on that so that it at least?
Part of being around, I mean. The, the whole process getting around, at least you could, could attempt to maintain it more so than we did.
Right.
And there's gonna be times in the year, right, it's known that it's just.
Yeah, cause he knows it, but it'll be fine.
Yeah.
And the side areas, you got a, you got a problem over there, maybe, that's not town road, but it's town property with roads on it.
Yeah.
You've got some repair work there that'll become a test, probably get outs repaired.
And if anything, it's like where it was kind of like disaster, I mean, like, it really is like, kind of like a disaster and flooding issues that caused some of these issues, like, do we have any addition? do we have any additional or like alternative funding sources other than, you know, just our road stuff because of what just happened?
So I don't wanna be too blunt, but the condition of Bigelow Hill, that responsibility lays at the feet of about seventeen petition signers.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, and so they're very, very fortunate that we're able to secure two and a half million dollars in federal funding.
Bingo.
And that the road committee left it and the select board has heartburn. And pretty much if we're, if we have stretched money in that two and a half, it's gonna go to Bigelow.
Yes.
That's gonna target Sandy River Road and by the rail road, those areas that we have for bank problems. And then Bigelow Hill, right now it's kind of what we're planning for, but it doesn't require engineering. It's gonna require surface repair and then we're good.
Well, I can explain to you that those, Richard just alluded to, those are the we have to projects, that no time, no time. While you didn't, my, my list high enough on the list, this is not our, this is not, this list is not of our ability, this is handed to us saying, you will address this. We're lucky enough to get money to help, cause otherwise it's a hefty bill that yeah, we would not be.
I think probably the middle of February will be the next time that the organ committee gets together, cause everybody's traveled. But they have a list, we're, we're sticking to it pretty much. The one project that we, we are gonna see engineering prices on various, will be the Wild Hill, we're pretty much committed to that. I think the general consensus is that they're likely gonna move that road just to the right as you travel and, um, and to avoid all the potential litigation for reasons we assume and things like that, so that's a project that's gonna take a chunk of money out of our budget. And this stuff out here is gonna be that nice to have and it's frustrating because it's a ton of money in a small section, but it's long overdue.
That would cover us for, that would help cover us for lack of being able to get everything done, it's gonna give us at least some flexibility to address some of the issues that we have, you, you guys gave us more money. I said seven fifty, but if you look at inflationary costs, like hot talk, everything, it doesn't even, you know, we've, we worked on a huge string budget for years. And as I explained, Richard, twenty-five years ago, Doug Fairan tried to put together a bond where just get the money, fixed all the roads up to a hundred percent, paid them on them. That didn't fly, so, and I think it was, I wanna save us something, eight million dollars twenty years ago. And, you know, and it just, that's a very big number for a small town and nobody could wrap their head around it, but now they wanna know why their roads are garbage, but when you're doing five hundred thousand dollars, that's a very small section of road if you have major issues to address.
Yeah, it just, it opened my eyes, I know that I travel, the certain roads that I travel and now having that onset of me going down that road, like how, it made me think like, how many other roads do we have like that that aren't part of my daily commute or anything that I'm seeing that like in the same spot, cause I was like wow, I didn't realize we had roads.
I haven't been on Red Bank in, I don't know, two years, right?
And that's bad on me, like, I mean, I should be seeing them, but like I, I didn't.
You have to be careful. I mean, you have to be careful, you travel Red Bottom Road, there's two people, two houses on it.
Yeah.
And I had this discussion with Brian Sleutner, just turned out you can't do that. But how much money do you wanna spend on that?
Yeah.
Well, it was the only way to go was to tell me that. A hundred percent, a hundred percent true, I mean, you don't realize valuable until you don't have it.
Yeah.
And I remember when I was a kid, when I was a kid, you couldn't get through there, so it's like, white years ahead of what was thirty-five years ago.
But it's outside of your daily travels, you just really don't.
And just like this, the oddity of the last few days, it just kind of like brought up some stuff like, okay, Richard, do we have anything that got worked that we need to address like immediately because of damage stuff? I mean, again, like my, I'm on River Road, which is the worst one we probably have and it's not even town road, so I mean, it's just, I'm looking at the worst of what can possibly happen to a road in my front yard and I think it's I just wanna make sure that's not happening anywhere else, but we're responsible.
If they trigger FEMA declaration, which they should, then they'll come and visit again and as a part of all of my deploying will be mitigation claim. Now with the spring storm, I was able to pay for all of our public works. Culvert replacements, so cross culverts, driveway culverts, ditching, rip wrap, all of that that we did at Oak Hill. Cause it washed out and then the repairs that we made and the upgrades to the were associated with the damage, they're gonna pay that. Or ninety percent state will kick a five. But, so I'm taking, trying to take advantage of that and the money won't hit back to their budget this year, but it'll just come in and send, you know, the general fund for, or my FEMA account and it'll be that way.
So and, and then you give the money goes to the general account?
No, it goes, what we've been receiving from FEMA has been going to the FEMA account, we have an emergency fund now, because when I got here, we had nothing. And when I got here, we had that October twenty seventeen storm.
Yes.
That, and what we got, we drained everybody's department budgets and I think we got twenty-seven thousand dollars back or something and the board voted to establish that and keep it. And so it has made things, I probably thought it was so stressful. It made a lot of what we were doing stress free because I didn't have to worry about where am I gonna get this money and where they meant to send me, we'd be in a really bad way.
Yes.
So to be able to say, okay, if you need a contractor, go get a contractor, I can't worry about overtime, keep worrying about this and worry about that. If we need towels or we need food, then that's what we're gonna go do. No, we don't need to stress with that, and so that's been a blessing. But it's the thing people stress over, who's paying for this? I mean, not the individuals, but organizations.
Where are we getting the money from this?
Right, and I, I'm extremely glad that we did, I mean, that really was the difference.
Yeah.
For him to be able to say, well, it doesn't matter. I buy all the food in the refrigerator, it's at fifty, it melts, I will pay for it all, just let me know how much of this.
Right.
The, well, what do you mean? And I said, I'll pay for it and I'll claim my FEMA down the line.
And just restart, yeah, after the fact, right, perfect.
Yes, so, definitely. And we may end up and nobody else is putting up, uh, we may end up talking about utilizing some of those funds, getting them into the county, and utilizing some of those funds for some major deferred purchases, some what's that? You know, like replace the code in the barricades. They won't visit, well.
People see their suggestions, huh?
Essentially ran out there. And, and didn't have, let's say enough of the red barricade to detour.
Yes, yeah, and like the low shoulder bones.
So all of a sudden you barricaded half the roads in town and you're out of barricades. Well, when you're in this event, where are you going to get more? You don't need somebody busting out a Sharpie to put a detour, you know what I mean? Really shouldn't be that way, but you don't notice because when was the last time you blocked every, every road, you know? So, yeah, it certainly shed some light on the soft blocks in our.
We did pay this, we have another barricade here or there, and a couple of different residences. How many of those do you think we own? Were we gonna need a new barricade garage?
Yeah, maybe have some. Uh, anything else for the board on their other business? Uh, you have anything for other business, okay, uh, discussion action on twenty twenty-four budget. Okay, so we've gone through a lot of the budget and I'm just gonna hit my departments, we've gone through, well, let's just go right through, you know, administration, cause everybody's got the same packet and you wanna see what we have. Administration, we talked about last time. Uh, you were looking at the increase, you got your notes on the side mark and if you have any questions, concerns. So what I'm gonna ask you for is after each one of them, you recommend a budget of set amount of the requirements.
Can we pause then? Cause I have a question. I have a recommendation for press for some of the things that are on local philanthropy that I feel like shouldn't be there and should maybe be under other things, as I feel like approving them one at a time, I don't, I don't know.
Are you wanna change the funding number or do you want to change recipients?
I change the bucket it's coming out of.
I, I want to like grave flags, cannot go under cemeteries instead of local philanthropy. And the mid main birth chamber of commerce, if it's paying for memberships, cannot go under administration. And even the downtown flags, cannot go, I don't know if that would be parts or administration, but I just feel like those, those to me aren't like local philanthropy things. But I could be great.
Yeah, it's like, I'm seeing.
Yeah.
So I just, I'm bringing up now, cause I, if we're about to like prove one by one, I don't wanna like that's ever.
So, so can I, yeah, yeah, that's, and I went with the good old school answer, right? That's where it's always been. The reason that those categories are there, Memorial Day gray flags and downtown flag, because that used to go with the DFW, and it used to be the, the DFW, whatever, possible flags, we just, we made it. And the gray flags at one point in time, I think we paid for firefighter flags here and there and sometimes the association would build when they were financially able to. That is why they're there. The Chamber of Commerce ended up in this category, we asked the TIP committee for funding, uh, one year and there was a recent statement on a pushback, but this board is passionate about paying it and so the choice is made to put it into this bucket. To me, if you wanted to pull the main chamber out, you would pull that and put it unclassified, we would pay for other memberships, we pay for our main municipal, we pay for K C O. And that's, you can just reassign that, we know what that number is gonna be. And then if you wanted to reclass the Memorial Day gray flags to like cemeteries, uh, we could, and the downtown flags, I would say you could move the rest of their parks. With this very down. That's probably the right way to do it.
I, I was, when I went to go like find how much we had left, I was surprised that some of the numbers had changed and that's because they're kind of variables, you don't know how many flags you need. Like all that kind of stuff, and I was like, what is happening? So I feel like if it's that kind of an expansion, not just a, here you go. Do what you do with it, I feel like it should go somewhere else.
But certainly clean it up and takes it, so it doesn't look like we're, you know, paying for memberships. So is the board fine with taking the chamber allocation, moving that to unclassified?
Yes.
And then we're gonna move Memorial Day gray flags, cemetery and downtown flags, parks.
Thanks.
Welcome. And then, right, you could even quit that or you can approve and you can tidy your dollar number. You wanna, you wanna talk about it in the evening, right? Uh, yeah, yeah, why don't, why don't? If you have any discussion or if I can take your questions, answers, does he have like? All right, you've essentially gone over it, it's just right.
So we just need to.
Adjusting that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the adjusting of philanthropy affects the administration. I don't have any new questions since the last time we talked about it. But well, that would be pretty good, I guess, so we should just make motion now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I make a motion to approve the administration line budget up to the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred dollars. Is that that? Or is it below it?
That's G day right there.
It's on the first.
It's very first one.
Very first.
You approve expenses and then.
Well, I'm real confused.
Uh, one is.
Oh, those must have, no. Why is full cost of department here?
Cause we take that, um, expenses left, revenues that are attributed to that department and then it adds up.
Okay. All right, I go to approve the twenty twenty-four manager request for the administration budget in the amount of four hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred dollars, second.
Fourth and second, any further discussion on that? Fire away. No, no. Oh, yeah. Seeing that, although it's in a paper, that's everybody.
Okay, so we non-for-profit officials.
Yeah.
I hope that we approve the twenty twenty-four money request for like officials in the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Okay. Fourth and second, any further discussion? Seeing that, follows in favor, that's everybody.
I'm going to approve the fact of setting the twenty twenty-four budget to twenty-three thousand six hundred.
Second. Any further discussion, seeing that, all is in favor, that's everybody. Look, well, I need you to keep them separate because you may wanna.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
I moved to Republic Safety twenty twenty-four budget of one hundred thirty-one thousand ten dollars.
Motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing that, all those paper, that's everybody.
No, good for the twenty twenty-four fire department, amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars.
I'm gonna interject here. Yeah. The fire chief, his interim fire chief, couldn't be fire chief, is here. And he has his spreadsheet, this is the budget that you have not reviewed. And he has explanation, he's going that there is a legal size spreadsheet, it's this file side way. And I would like to ask, but thank you for, while I'm making some budgetary adjustments.
Sounds is different from the one that.
It's not, it's just one that he submits and one that I.
It's the same amount, right? This is just a breakdown of all of it?
He's providing you an overview.
I do my own spreadsheets.
Well, we, yeah, we already went over what the budget was for.
No, you did not cover fire at your last meeting, you did talk about a lot of them, but not fire.
So Todd, fire away.
Uh, well, I just wanted to know if you had any particular questions, there's, um, you know, our budget is two thirds or more now labor. And of course, you know, labor drives the boss big time, right? So the first two line items are for our full-time firefighters and and what I did there is I added seven percent, um, to what I would expect to spend in twenty-three. And of course, you're guessing it down, right? Because it's, it's roughly Halloween and you're trying to figure out what, what you're gonna spend in twenty-three. And then add seven percent to that to try to be conservative, right? Because you, you have the employee wages and, and, and increases, raises, et cetera, so those are the first two lines, the second two line items, um, well, let's go by the third one, uh, we're calling it part-time administration now, we've, we named it. Okay, but you know, later on that, but that's just myself and Darrell Wyman, we had that uh, discussion at the last meeting. And then call force firefighters, I wanted to break that out separately and I reduced that line item by by quite a bit, just taking into account recent trends um, of, of lower numbers and then uh, of course, taking myself out of that equation, right? So, uh, reduce that to a six-year running average. And then that still includes money, by the way, for a wage increase for the call force firefighters. They haven't gone up for a while, is it sixteen now? I wanna move that to seventeen dollars in the car in twenty twenty-four and, uh, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, those largely come from either formulas or from Richard. Uh, the health insurance is huge, uh, if you look at that one, it's, uh, what it is, is fourteen thousand three hundred eight dollars times three. Uh, now I'm not gonna be taking the health insurance, but nonetheless, you're budget for if I get it by a truck and Mike takes my job and he needs help over, that's why you do that, so, um, but that's the two full timers that tend myself, but like, again, I won't be taking that, the FICA is just a percentage deal, uh, the benefits that came from Richard, that's just a percentage deal. And once you get below that, you're talking about nickels and dimes all the way down through the rest of the chart. Uh, I took a little out here, I had a little more there and uh, uh, you'll see above up in the uniforms, uh, you know, just small stuff, really, it's that labor element at the top that, that drives it. And, um, you know, the last couple of days tells us why those kind of things are important, I guess.
What was it? Twenty twenty-three Forest Street Grant?
I'm sorry?
What's the twenty twenty-three Forest Street Grant?
Yeah, uh, I think, I think there might be an accounting issue there. We're gonna blame it on him, but I don't know, we're still in search of a reimbursement from the state. So every year we apply, we get a grant from the state of Maine Forest Street um, to pay fifty percent of whatever we put in for, uh, to a limit for firefighting equipment for horse fires, you know, shuttles and axes and radios or whatever. And twenty twenty-three, we got a grant and we purchased this stuff. And I'm told submitted the reimbursement forms, but we haven't found the reimbursement check yet. And so I need to work on that for the next few days, next few weeks. Um, it looks like it's eight hundred and fifteen hundred and something dollars and they probably do. And because I think Peter, they found the check. And he said he has it, you still have it, correct? Or it might have been a direct deposit. Well, right, we, but I think you get some sort of confirmation from the state that they. Stay it, right? And if they paid it, then how did they go? So that's what that note was about. Um. Any other questions? Sorry, Lindsay, you have.
Yeah, I'm just looking at like the percentage increase, like more looking at each year, what the budgetary increase looks like and. If it's nine and a half over last year, what are budget or our actual? Is that the? The nine and a half percent increase, that's what our budget increase is looking at?
The three hundred eighteen thousand in um budget, three hundred eighteen four twenty six. Is nine and a half percent of what was budgeted for twenty twenty three.
Okay, yeah, I mean, like, that's honestly, it's one of the lower ones we've had for your increase.
Yeah, I I think it's very responsible um. You know, I I I wish. Fire department was cheaper every year, but it's on.
Yeah, with additional stuff and so I'm, I mean. Inflation is over eight percent. I mean, if we're only at nine and a half percent, yes, more money, but honestly, like, that's far less during the night would be anticipated.
Thirty thirty years ago, when when labor was not driving your budget, you know, you could cut a nickel like a dime and.
Yeah.
Whatever and do this and do that and show off that budget, but when labor is your budget.
Yeah.
And things like health insurance and such, a lot of those things you don't even have any say.
Well, you can cut these items, right? Then you're not, you're not changing them.
Where you're really, it's it comes down to black and white. Am I going to have two full time and two part time firefighters or am I not?
And these are, you know, for budgeting stating coming less with a lot of those things. So. I'm going to move that we approve the fire current twenty twenty four budget in the amount of three hundred eighteen thousand four hundred twenty six dollars.
Second motion, second, any further discussions, seeing none, all those favor, that's everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have anything new in public works or is this what we? Is it not, I'm going to move that we approve the twenty twenty four public works um. Budget for seven hundred fifty three thousand six hundred and seventy five dollars.
Motion second, I have further discussion on that. Seeing none, all those in favor. Everybody.
I'll move to.
Sorry, this is. So I have pulled over gray flags, the Memorial Day gray flags.
Okay.
We spent seven twenty four. Um and that's probably in the wrong column, but. That's what we spent, so I'm asking for a budget of eight hundred to put into that, so sixty six fifty. Is the request for cemeteries.
Okay.
My recommendation is sixty six fifty.
I move that we approve sixty six fifty for the cemetery twenty twenty four budget.
Second. Uh second, any further discussion, seeing none, all those favor, that's everybody.
We'll do accept the dental assistance budget for twenty twenty four thirty six hundred.
Motion second uh. Any further discussions, seeing none, all is in favor. It's everybody.
Motion for the twenty twenty four recreation budget in that thirty two thousand three hundred and twenty five dollars.
Now, motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of the favor, that's everybody.
Parks have a new amount now.
With regards to.
We move something over.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Did that not get moved? It did get moved though. Yeah, okay, so we had a downtown flags. And that's not supposed to be that, that's a copy and paste from there um. Oh, my goodness. I'm gonna put a thousand bucks because I don't know. I can tell you we're not gonna have. Flags down Main Street this year, but this account also pays for the flags that are at. The cemetery. The flag pole out here at the monument, any flags that are at any county buildings come out of my downtown flags.
See, we won't have flags for Down Main Street on our new light poles or.
We're not gonna have those in the season.
Oh, we're not, okay, right, they don't get hard at this point.
So now we're looking to approve the twenty twenty four budget for parks as thirty thousand three hundred eighty dollars instead.
Yes.
Motion second, any further discussion on that, seeing none, all those favor. It's everybody.
Um with the library. Um what is the difference between the department and the manager request, the difference in? Money there? What's that?
Well, they needed availability.
You need real estate. So what I'll do.
Too good that cleaning, isn't it?
Yeah, all that's taken care of right now. There's a difference of twenty two hundred dollars in wages.
It's wages.
So it's always driven.
Okay.
Twenty two forty, twenty two forty four. The trustee has made a recommendation as to what the rate for the supply and where it should be in my. But the request is different.
Is that because?
Thousand dollars.
Yes.
If you will. So I believe that. Our librarian gets paid from, say, ten to two on Wednesdays. Librarian is expected to be open from ten to two on Wednesdays. So the librarian comes here. Librarian goes to the library, has to open up, has to close up, and so we're asking them to do it in the confines of. The ten to two, they're already paying, that we expect we're going to be open from ten to two.
Okay.
Also, I'm saying we should be bravely paying this individual.
Okay.
Fifteen minutes on each side to take care of whatever needs to be done. Um and so. That's kind of where I'm at, and that's what drives that increase over the course of the year.
Okay, so I would that we approve the twenty twenty four library budget in the amount of five fifty one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Second motion and a second uh.
You want to say chairman of the library board get to say anything or? Is that the only question maybe we remember?
All those tough unless you're suddenly right, I was about to ask you, but I mean, I could have me not speak. Uh no, right on. So uh.
I mean.
We were about to discuss here, uh so I had to open up for discussion, and you do have some valid information for that discussion. So I would actually ask you at this point, if you had anything to add.
I would come off and not.
No, it's it's fine. Uh a- anything on that?
Yes, we had, what Richard says is true, although actually he gave us. The suggested amounts and we went with it. But we had a difference in when was it start, a higher wage. And we differed in. We wanted to keep the hours as they are. And make up the, we don't see any reason for to pay her half an hour. Each shift, a stop in the town office. And if. It's felt that it is necessary, then. We would take it out of someone's route, say. Would sign on the door, there could be later, whatever, we offered as the trustee, I would come and pick up the entry library and all this. It just, we don't want to extend the hours, it's. Give four hours more. For each shift. Is what's the amount, Richard? For the year.
Twenty two hundred forty four.
The whole year.
And we've gone this far along the way, nobody's ever been paid, they start, I mean, I don't even know why you'd be here about an hour every day. Could it somehow be done by phone? And then couldn't there be some friends in the library, library trustees, or whatever? We were just cautious.
Okay.
Put the budget, we didn't want it to go over thirty thousand dollars a year, which I don't think my glasses are, it does. And the recommendations of. What they would be paid the two people.
The trustee budget is at forty nine thousand.
What you're asking, top line.
Oh, so you're twenty five thousand six hundred.
So and you are, so you're sticking on it, but I, thank you, I appreciate his explanation, as I'm sure the rest of the board does uh.
I say it's always better to have a little buffer, just in case, I mean, say we've got like some programs or something, you guys have been doing such awesome programs for the library. Say, I mean, if we've got that extra in there, whether that extra fifteen minutes or something stays there. Um if that for some reason wasn't there, but then there was that extra money there, could they be? You know, extra hours on a weekend doing some special craft or an after school thing, I mean, they have the buffer there, so you have it, but you don't have to use it, I.
Yeah, give somebody to fill them.
Right.
Is that any extra hours each?
I'll stop you right here. Uh it's dicey because it is an employee issue and we don't dictate what happens in employees and we don't dictate. The wage that's done by the town manager. Uh so again, I.
We agreed on the wage.
Yeah, and and also I'll leave that with me, you and Richard and no involvement of the community star board.
No, it has nothing to do with the library trustees.
Okay, there we.
Wage setting has to do with me. If you have an issue with my wage setting, then the select board deals with me.
Uh so you have.
Your rec, if you accept my recommendation, I can tell you that I intend to pay the individual person starting his library in fifteen minutes on each side. We're asking. An office clerk to come in and be open at eight o'clock, but we're going to start opening at eight o'clock. Who gets out the drawer, who gets out the computer, who has the lights on in the evening, things like that.
I'm comfortable.
That's where I am. So that's why.
Yeah.
That is what will be implemented if you recommend my work.
Okay. So I already put it out there for that amount.
Yep, so I can say. No further discussion. Once the board, all those in favor. Everyone. Yes, you're handling that, yes. Okay, I was like, am I hallucinating?
Alright, I move that we approve the code enforcement budget for twenty twenty four in the amount of forty six thousand one hundred dollars.
Second, motion second, uh any discussions? Seeing none, all is in favor. That's everyone.
I move we approve the twenty twenty four planning board budget in the amount of twenty two hundred dollars.
Second, from the second, any discussion?
There is a slight increase in here. We have not talked about it. Uh it's only two hundred dollars, but the, you've got some folks on the planning board that are traveling now for training. And so that was just two instances they'd gone for the hundred and eighty four, so they wanted to add that in there.
I think the more training I turn in targets. So I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, uh anything else on the discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, that's everyone.
I I have now, sorry, reduced my amount out of this. I told Kelsey, hopefully it won't be a surprise. I just added up. It was approximately seventeen or eighteen hundred dollars. That we had kind of transferred to other funds. And so on my ass now is eight thousand. If you want to leave it at ten, you can move it to ten, but my recommendations to appear is eight.
It's eight, the actual budget for last year was seven.
Personally, I'd like to see us stay at the ten. It's always.
Yeah.
Had that ability to go up to that, you know what I mean, I guess.
Uh ten?
Uh well, no, I guess I don't, I don't want to reduce it, even though we moved those things.
Really?
No, because you can move stuff.
Yeah.
Right.
Just giving away more money, just, yeah.
Okay, I guess I'm comfortable either way.
Right.
I I would move that we go with the town manager's request of eight thousand for philanthropy for twenty twenty four budget.
Second, motion second, uh any further discussion?
I don't like it in general. I feel like it shouldn't. A thing.
I.
Funny on the record saying that.
Yeah.
It's a good thing, but.
It's neato, but dicey. But it's there, so I can.
All those in favor. Sure.
Right, I'll move that we approve the summer grounds twenty twenty four budget of forty five thousand.
Second, motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. It's everyone.
Would we approve the debt service twenty twenty four budget in the amount of ninety three thousand four hundred and twenty three dollars?
Second, motion second, any further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor.
Move that we key, move.
That was different.
So this one I've moved the mid main chamber of commerce over forecasted six hundred dollars. That makes you new number thirty one five thirty six.
Alright, thirty one five thirty six, twenty twenty four budget for unclassified.
Second, motion second, any further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor. That's everybody.
Would approve the twenty twelve budget of ten thousand dollars for contingency.
Motion second, any further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor. It's everybody.
Move to prove the capital reserves budget for twenty twenty four in the amount of one million sixty thousand dollars.
Uh motion second. Uh any further discussion?
Yes. We have not reviewed this. This was something that I did at the end of planning to see where we could get it. Most things are unchanged. Uh. One of the big concerns I had coming in was what was the fire department going to need to make adjustments in theirs for, and what if you get to that fire truck? And are they saving on par with what they think their long term goals are? And the answer is yes. And so there doesn't appear to be any, well, there's not any for an adjustment this year based upon the department's request. They're leaving it at a hundred or ten. Uh for equipment and building respectively. Um and I think that's a pretty consistent number for saving that for future purchases. It may need some adjustments here and there or some other funding, but um that was a big thing I was keeping my eye on is if we were going to need to redirect funds to them. So the big adjustment that you see from my office is for public works.
Yes.
We have uh greater that I think is older than I am, if not, it's pretty close. Uh we've got two trucks that we purchased. That was the first thing that arrived after I arrived eight years ago. Um and that are the newest truck, less than one that we just got. We need to be saving more aggressively. We just paid about a quarter million dollars for that. Uh truck that we just purchased. Um and I think that we need to start saving more far, so we've been saving twenty five, the sheer facts of that stuff, but we should be saving that stuff. Um and and we have. Play a lot of, I, I'm, there's a lot more equipment that we deal with. Um and it's. More wear and tear on it as well. So I'm recommending strongly that that get increased to a hundred thousand dollars a year in the reserve. You're going to see that office set.
Yeah.
In a different part of this budget. Um and I'll get to that in a different category.
Um the tax revaluation will be the other one.
So the parks is new, the parks committees asked, they've got a lot more on their plate. So you're looking at, you know, maintenance of buildings or replacement of buildings. Um and and they're tasked with more, so it's dot replaces down the line or things like that, the hopefully our insurance related. They're they're asking for ten thousand to do that. Your tax revale, I'm recommending that we go from ten to twenty five. Um we have, I want to say hundred, hundred and twenty five in there. Uh we are getting dangerously low in terms of where the state wants to see before they start penalizing. The assessing agent has had a conversation with the board assessors. Uh indicating that within the next two to three years, we're probably going to need one. Um. There's a. Personal property component, this uh the commercial component that are big deficiencies. And another deficiency that we're seeing are pre fabricated homes. Uh your modular homes and your mobile homes, uh they seem to be skewed in terms of what the market is produced relative to. Uh standard wood wood. Structures in North. Uh we're off and it seems like we just did it.
Yeah.
But another way, how long was it done in two thousand and sixteen?
Yeah.
For already year seven, uh it was implemented in seventeen. You have to do it to keep yourself ideally above eighty percent. We're down below already. Uh we were down to sixty three percent, does that sound right? Before we did the reval the last time. It was down low and then there was a huge redistribution of, you know, depending upon the age of your house and whatnot.
Um and so does that cost, is that like just to pay someone to do these revaluers?
To pay somebody to go out, it's to do exactly what we did before, take photos of the property, make sure that what's there for buildings is what we have inventoried for buildings.
Right, what did it cost last time?
A hundred and twenty five, I think.
What do we have in our account?
About that. The fact is that that you're looking at a quarter million dollar contract right now.
Geez.
Yeah.
We, it's something that, again, it's a transfer from one pocket to the other, but we need to really, nobody's going to take it. Well, if you say, oh, I need. For at three dollars, a hundred thousand dollars a share. When we could just be kind of.
But it's a, it's just like a lot of fire truck, you know, we've got a big expense in this colony, that's what, you can save it now or wish you'd save it later.
And are we, at what point did we start to affect the home state exemptions and stuff like that?
We already have.
Well, so we don't, we've already.
Well, it's, it's deceiving because because your value slumps, your home dead goes down. But it's all proportionate.
Right.
So it looks like you're getting less money back, but you're really not. It's all equitable almost far as the state's going to say. We can do adjustments and that's what we've been doing. We've been doing adjustments.
Yeah.
It pacifies the state, but we can't do that much more than that. It'll be a vote of the more of the specialists to sign a contract and they'll probably have to look at that seriously to sign a contract in the next twelve months.
Yeah.
So before there's a motion on this. I need to take you back to how I get to this.
Didn't you just do that?
No. How am I going to be able to fund all of this? Okay.
So do you have any questions on the fire before he leaves that page?
It won't be bad before we do that, but what I need to, so that you can see the components of how the budget's coming together, is this wonderful button right here. And that is. Uh. Yeah, right? Yeah, okay. So we're looking at revenue summaries for, this is what really offsets. It's going to be some bigger numbers than others. The administration, you're seeing the increase of almost thirty thousand dollars in forecasting revenues. I'm attributing that to interest income. It's still a conservative number. We talked about that at your last meeting. Um but. That's a bad, so right there. Um that's where we're largely covering off increases in expenses in administration. Um your public safety, I pulled out that offset from the animal welfare account. It just seems to be kind of mundane. This is attributed to um. The increase in our budget versus seventeen percent there. First part negligible. Host community fees, I'm recommending we increase to eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. We use seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars last year. Uh as a revenue and I'm recommending that we increase that to eight hundred and seventy five thousand.
Yeah, well, I mean, why wouldn't we? It is coming.
Right, so it's, the schools have fought um as to where we are and then down here, this is the state, which isn't really local, but. Um I'm just aligning here and then to show you where you, where we are on. Waste management. Year to date, we're we're in a very good position. Not that you want to waste it all away, but to reassure you that what I'm proposing. Eight seventy five is reasonable.
Okay.
This is where we are year to date. This is where we are year to date, one point two seven five, so say we just get in a hundred. On January fifteenth, you know, we've got one point three, we've still got five hundred thousand people sitting in the till. So that's my recommendation, you can no, use this in your mind as you consider, but that's kind of where I'm at, we can always take money from. Undesignated and move it or whatnot, so, um, that's kind of how I came to that eight seventy five. Pull it back over here. And. And I guess that's the budget right here, that's this year's budget. It's at ninety five thousand dollars. And then I'm gonna recommend that you increase surplus allowance, open surplus from four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. And that's gonna put you less of a lap. This would, this proposal here, it never increased surplus would actually decrease tax. The other thing is that, uh, I'm gonna ask you to consider funding for, which wouldn't affect this necessarily. And I don't have my undesignated amount, but up to fifty thousand dollars for. To replace the gazebo roof solar bar, give it a raise up.
I saw that in here.
Yeah.
That's not, I mean, we have to, do we have to pay fund insurance down there because should the, like, is that?
No, we don't, it's all covered in our, it's not, well, we don't live there. So it would get raised up, this gazebo didn't move, didn't move in eighty seven, same gazebo, I was told today, all the posts have fond memories for a lot of people. I didn't either, but so that's. You know, in my mind, I don't know if you've been to Belgrade Village, but they have a very similar one, it's just raised up, there's a ceiling in it, actually, they've got cam lights in it. They've got a ramp, so it's accessible, and, uh, I mean, this one is just kind of an eyesore, it's got the big loudspeaker on the top. And redoing this would be better for the music series. Well, I know fifty is a big peg, and so my recommendation would be to put it to voters.
Yeah, I mean, I know the gazebo because of the shape of that, it's making it more expensive, like if we need a stage or something like that, I mean.
So the gazebo has, uh, history for the folks that contributed to the original one, and it's got family connections to the town. So I want to be sensitive to that.
Is it possible that of that down by all elsewhere?
That's was discussed.
So they can build something else.
I don't, I mean, we could, we could.
I don't know if it's even movable without it all falling apart, I don't know.
Right, there was a discussion about moving it somewhere else in the park, in my mind, and in the committee's mind, it was. We would just get rid of it and use that existing footprint that's there, and you'd save a chunk of money in the earthwork. But, you know, that's your pleasure, you don't have to do it, it doesn't, it's not gonna affect the way that I'm proposing it to. Whether or not voters wanted to do it, to pull it out of surplus.
Cause really, you're just. Lining up the funding source, not necessarily the design.
Yeah.
Nothing saying that it's the exact same shape as the existing.
Lot of money for.
Don't you actually start thinking about it, and it's like. Lights and power, and it doesn't take long to get to that number on small projects now, which is just scary.
Necessary.
That's right, the available piece there.
Uh, nothing on that yet, we're gonna go back over to capital reserves. You've seen the total, did you have any questions about summary picture, the revenues or anything else?
So I already put out the motion for the one million sixty thousand for capital reserves.
Second motion and second, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone.
Now on the bottom side of all of these departments, you've seen revenues, there's only a handful of the departments do have revenues. But your anticipated local revenues at one million eight twenty three, one sixty eight, that's gonna be on the, you have a revenue page?
To get less taxes.
We had a budget summary, and then you had twenty twenty four revenue summary. And the one eight two three one six eight is your local revenue.
So we need to approve the twenty four hundred for that amount?
Yes.
I move that we approve the twenty four hundred budget for our local revenue in the amount of one million eight hundred and twenty three thousand one hundred and sixty eight dollars.
Motion and second, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
And then the second is the lower component is state revenue at five seventy nine six hundred.
I move that we approve the five seventy nine six hundred for state revenue for twenty twenty four budget.
Second motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone.
So that's kind of where we're at, that's the package that we wanted to say, uh, if you wanna talk about who designated fund, does the board have a thought about that? I don't have a number, but I'm confident that we're gonna have enough money to be able to recommend. Put it from the warehouse. Last year, the undesignated fund was just shy of the absolute maximum recommendation of the. Board did not want to go try the maximum.
Right.
The tax assessors were furious. The tax, you know, they wanted to get your back, but, right, I mean, it's really administration, and their assessing agent that said, you know, we need to connect taxes on the second, Thursday, August. Or it's gonna go over a good month, so they went into that. Um, we can, we wait for that, it's 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 gonna take us a bit longer. If you're uncomfortable pulling from the undesignated, you could increase the revenues in replacement in the most fees. Really the pocket you're gonna.
Less than what they recommended, because we wanted to keep a certain amount in our.
Yes.
Right, yeah, and I did get some pushback.
I didn't realize the renovation, I I.
Yeah, it did increase some people's.
Oops, taxes.
Uh, so you're, you want, you're comfortable with five hundred thousand?
Okay, so the consensus is, and that's what I'm gonna share, cause we're not gonna hold on that today, consensus of five hundred. What's the chances of like unveiling? How about we just talk about this gazebo a little bit? Okay, and then that's last. So what are your thoughts on the gazebo, and the way that I've kind of drafted is that it would be a good value referendum, it would be drawn from surplus.
No, I think we gotta talk about this more, cause I honestly am not sold on spending that much money on it. I I don't, not finding the value, and if it's certainly because of like family ties, definitely not a taxpayer, but it's saving value in that stuff.
Uh, you're basically asking the voters to approve a dollar amount, not a design. So even if they approve the money, doesn't mean we have to. Yeah, I I don't, just because they approve it, doesn't mean that we have to.
When do we ever for any other sort of like stuff like that, put it out to the voters for that?
The reason the parks committee budget is high.
Yeah.
And they thought that it was something that they should be included in, in terms of the ask. They didn't want to just come and say, okay, we want sixty grand or fifty grand to reconstruct this this year. So the sensitive way to do it, knowing that we were already in a referendum question, was to say, we'll just put it to the voters, and we're not gonna have any of our feelings, but we really like it.
Why don't they go through tech?
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't go through for. It's a purely part, it's purely.
I mean, if they're doing the concert, so that is like, technically like.
You're basically just asking everybody to vote on the idea of it, and as long as I think, as long as the the vote says that they're supportive of it. Then we'll move forward with the design that we, unless we have time.
I feel like this one feels jumpy, I mean, like, we don't even know what's going on with the gazebo, like, yes, it did a little bit of stuff, but like, can it be repaired, and have we even explored that?
It's not about the repair, it's about, you know, the painting that's all over, it's about the overall attractiveness of it, the need for a new roof. The loudspeaker and the big boom that comes off the top of it, the seating, the electrical and all of that, and they want something that's more.
I'm sure they do, everybody wants something, but like.
And that's their job is to contest you.
I'm not at a point to make a decision on putting that on like a ballot at this point, I think I wanna know what that is and get it so it's like. Nice and neat, like if that's four grand, like, we fix what we have and not just tear it and build something new, I I, I feel like it feels a little reckless to put that out there because.
So gazebo is where this music was last year. If we're gonna make music a big thing going forward, if that even big enough. How is what we're looking at going forward?
That was part of the discussion, size and.
Feelings though, so you don't have to have a gazebo for that, you just plug in your stomach and have electricity.
No, you don't, uh, it was, uh, primarily, I don't say primarily, but it was feedback from the performers, right, people singing, you would get better acoustics and projectile. In a different setup, which is nice, and I mean, there's certainly, I mean, we have all been part, our gazebo is certainly in need, uh.
Of a spruce, not a tear down.
I I understand the voting, I wish we voted on everything.
We do what we're supposed to do, and look at it first before we even put it out there, if you just put it out there, I I feel like we're missing the step of. What does it actually need? Does it need like two grand versus like?
Same way you can just get voted down, so.
I'm not saying I wanna vote it down, I'm just saying, like, what does this thing, I I don't know, I feel like this one, I wasn't anticipating that, like, I don't, I haven't seen the state of it, like, if it even.
So by March, right, you should be able, before our town meeting, we should have a better feel for what we're looking at constructing down there, right? But you got to decide you wanna do that, and then you put it to the voters, I mean, we can do all this, and then the voters didn't like it regardless of what we come up with. And really, if we go through all this, and they say we don't want it, but if they, if the general consensus of the vote is, yes, we want something that I think. I was comfortable just going with whatever we wanted and not going to the voters, uh, but Richard felt that we should, and I honestly, we should, uh, just to. Verify the day back what we're thinking.
And I think voters wanna know, like. But it's also nice to fix what we already have, and I think that's what we're kind of leaving off here, we're giving voters an option, like, do something new and expensive. But like, what if the option that someone wants to check the box up is like, fix what we have in an economically responsible way, and I think that we're not doing that, we're not.
Like Ron said, so they're approving this money to either construct a new one, uh, and let's say we. Did decide we wanted to improve some, but didn't land in a design or found that it was easier to fix it, but we're not bound by this vote to construct a new gazebo. It gives us that option as to where, if we don't get the voters approval, you guys don't make choice whether we want to just approve it without voters. You know, it's a, or you go another year, uh. So it is, it's a toss up, I again, I was comfortable with this board's decision, if we all felt that we found a design we like, we dealt with it, uh. But in light of everything that's happened, I I think that we probably should go to the voters just to see, and hopefully before March, figure out what we need, how big it needs to be. And whether it's, uh, exact gazebo shape, that's got a race platform and lights up top, I mean, there's certainly pieces you can add and take away, the fact that costs.
But I think before we go to the voters, knowing what the future is for the park.
Yes.
Will make it that much easier for them to vote, if we have an idea in place of, this is what is going.
This is what we want, but I don't even know if playing rock equipment is still there. And the the new building is there, it's just a slightly different spot.
So yeah, I I don't think this binds us.
Uh, you need motion?
Uh, it would be a motion, yes.
I'm thinking I'm gonna rephrase this, given the conversation. It would be to see town vote authorize the expense of up to fifty thousand dollars for the unassigned unbalanced surplus. For the repair and or upgrade of a new structure, or or of a structure. To a structure, it's gonna be dated.
I would just leave it.
Yes, for one of those.
The gazebo.
It does say repair or.
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, that is in there. Uh, okay, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody. At that last half point.